Leading to order. Members in attendance, Mr. Mann, myself, so Brian, Ms. Curtin, and Ms. Skamerski will be here a little bit late, so we'll have, we will have a quorum. We may have to change the order a little bit depending on her arrival, if there's any voting items. With that, please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible)
We will now move to our students in blue attire tonight. Student council, welcome.
Good evening, everyone. The elections for both student and class councils are being held this week, and the winners will be announced on Friday, and we wish luck to all of our candidates.
And the Colombian award ceremony will be held next Friday, June 2nd, and winners will be notified that week with a golden ticket. And following that day, the senior prom will be held at 7 o'clock at the desk. That's all we have.
All right. Thank you. We do have the minutes. We will not do those right now. So I'll move to our board forum. Should be brief. Mark? Jennifer? Catherine? I just want to say thank you to the community for the budget vote. Welcome, Jesse, I think he's here. Jesse Temple, congratulations on your election as a board member. We'll see you soon in the, sitting up here in July, right? But again, thank the community for the budget. I want to thank the team here for the budget they put together. The impact on taxes is really zero to minimal, and we are still preserving our programs and services for kids, investing in our technology and doing a lot of great things, as you saw from the presentations last couple of months. So thank you again to the community, and also our bus purchases went through as well. So thank you for that. We'll now move to the public forum. Residents, students, employees, and/or, and business representatives of each regional school district may address the board on matters concerning programs and/or operations of the district other than matters involving personnel. Members of the board do not directly respond to existing concerns during the public forums. If a response is appropriate, either the president or superintendent will contact individual in the near future. Those persons wishing to address the board will be recognized by the chair of the meeting and should state for the record their name and address or affiliation with the district or business. While the board does not wish to infringe upon free speech protections, it must be stressed that the visitors forum is not deemed to be an open forum. The board president will conduct the forum for the orderly, efficient operation of board business. In addition, any remarks which be considered defamatory or stigmatizing are prohibited and will declared out of order. All comments shall be limited to five minutes. Does anyone like to address the board this time? No? Okay. We will move forward. We have reports and presentations next. Superintendent, I'll turn it over to Mr. Simons.
Yes, I'd like to ask Mr. Harkin and some of our high school students who are currently juniors, I believe, from the class of seniors.
Juniors and seniors?
To come and present a special presentation.
Sure. You guys could all please stand up.
So this school year, we decided to visit our cap and gowns for graduations, everyone's aware. Traditionally, we have worn white and this color light blue. I went to all of our clubs, we went to our student council presidents, our class presidents, we took polls, and people were really, for the most part, kind of split. Then we went over why we were doing it, to unite the class, to show unity and strength, and really it kind of swayed to about a 75% of the people were in favor of having the one color cap and gown. A lot of the people that were holdouts for the white were our young ladies who really liked to wear a white dress underneath their white gown, and it's just a thing, and it's like a, it's like a Hollywood thing they kept saying to me. The word they used was Coachella. I don't know what Coachella is, but they said that's what they would wear at a Coachella concert, so that was really like the holdout. So I explained to people at meetings that, you know, when I first came here, I didn't apply for this job originally when it was first posted because I didn't want to work in the big district, and I didn't want to have, be able to have contact with people. And then when I came here, I realized what a great community this is, what a strong community we are, how anyone that comes to Columbia High School is made to feel part of a small community, and I really enjoy that. At graduation, we line up alphabetically, we sit next to students from maybe your kindergarten or first grade class, or sixth grade in middle school, and we wanted to keep that, and we just wanted to look the same, be one class, one community, and be united for graduation. So I would like to recommend that for the class of 2024, which is a year and a month from now, that we move to graduate in the light blue. And I brought these guys in just to model it. We have everybody here.
Great models.
If you have any questions, the students can take it, or I can take it for you.
Yeah, I like to hear from the students about kind of their perspective on, on why the change and why you feel the support was there.
I agree with the change. I just think, yeah, it definitely shows unity, and it makes like the class stronger, and it's something that we can all be together on.
Yeah, I definitely agree with what Mr. Harkin, what Maddie said. I feel like we do have such a strong community at Columbia, and I think moving to the one color really does show our unity, and I think it looks more organized and stuff at graduation as well.
That's a good point.
I also agree. I think that it can be like really anxious for some students to have to make a choice between white and blue, so I'm glad that we're coming together and just doing one color for coming years.
I also agree, and I think that it makes it easier and unifies us all as one color.
Okay, great.
I am one of the Coachella girls. I like the white, so I think it's just like a traditional thing, like tradition, whatever, but I think that the blue is going to be a good change, and I think it's going to be. It'll look cleaner, and like everyone's going to look like one school, and it's going to look good.
So who do we have here, Mike? We know the two student council folks.
So this is Maddie Gruber, she's a senior, and you know Roan, and Emma, and this is Naim. He's actually known as the notorious Naim Greenberg Nelson around Columbia High School. He also will be competing for a sectional championship on Friday night.
Terrific.
And Natalie Foss, who's a three-sport athlete involved in our club, our council president. So we just have like a diverse student body here. And Mark Adam wanted me to mention that our photos will pop with the one color. He just wanted to make sure that we were all aware of that. He put his two cents in while we were having these surveys.
Great, great. So I fully endorse that. I mean, it's all formal board action, but we all fully endorse the, the change, and appreciate all the hard work that's going into it. Board members, any comments?
I'm really happy to see it, and I, you know, I commend you. I know change is hard sometimes and things that are considered traditional, but I think it's a small change that can maybe make other students feel included, and when you look at colleges, most of them are all black, and then you're just identified by what your colors are for your major, so I think the pictures will be really good next year.
So I have one question. Are you guys wearing swimming goggles around here tonight?
We actually are playing here right now. See, you started senior sash three weeks ago, and so our tournament's having calling us around.
Oh, okay.
So you are not, you are not out, if you get squirted and you have those goggles on, you are not out of the senior sash game. Because I have a senior in my home, I know all about this, and the students have been going out at night. Other rules are they can't get somebody on school campus, they can't get somebody at an athletic event, so.
We appreciate your courage. All right.
Never know if somebody's waiting for you outside the bar.
Interesting, okay. All right, nice, nice. All right, well, thanks for coming this evening, and I look forward to not only this graduation, but also seeing the all blue next year and being part of that ceremony. Thank you, Ms. Harkin.
Thank you.
So our next presentation is an update to the board regarding our goals for the year. Our district has had now for approximately six years a scorecard process through which we track our activities, our initiatives within our district, and ensure that the board receives information on the different priorities that we're working on aligned with the board's goals. Each fall, the board evaluates its goals. We made some revisions to the goals this year to be more aligned with where we are at now as a district after COVID-19. We have been part of the AASA Learning 2025 Initiative, and so the goal's aligned with that program as well. Typically, we give you a summary report for you to take a look at. It's available for the community to look at on our website, and then each member of our central office administrative team picks a couple of items to highlight. So I'll go first this evening, and I want to talk a little bit about goal two. Earlier this year, and really upon reflection of last year, the board and I had discussions regarding middle school, and we know we have a terrific middle school at Goth Middle School, we know we have good faculty and staff and terrific students and supportive parents, but we wanted to prioritize the support for the middle school a little bit more than what we have in years past. The middle school period of time for our students is an important developmental time, not only academically, but socially, emotionally, and physically. And so as kids transition from entering into the middle school in sixth grade after having the experience of the K-5 elementary schools and move through the middle school to leaving an eighth grade to high school, there's a lot of changes that occur, and it's really important to make sure that the program at the middle school is continuously evaluated, particularly in the sense that many of our kids now, particularly at the middle school level, are having some real needs related to their social-emotional development. Mental health is an important concern at all levels, but it particularly is challenging at the middle school level as kids are going through many different changes. So we asked Mr. McQ, the administrative team, and the faculty and staff at Goth Middle School to do a review of their school culture, their climate, the programs, the delivery of instruction and curriculum within the middle school, and to bring back information for the central office administration and the board to consider for further support and development. As part of that process, there have been teams from the middle school visiting other middle schools within our region this year, and they are scheduled to come here at the June 7th Board of Education meeting to present some of the information that they've gathered from these school visits. In February, a team from the middle school visited Bethlehem Central School District's middle school. In March, another team visited Gilderlin, and recently, towards the end of April, a different team from the middle school visited the middle school at Shaker. And they have been looking at such things as the programs that are being implemented in the school, the extracurricular activities, the support programs for students in terms of academic intervention services, special education, tutoring programs. They've also been looking at how the schedule operates and what types of scheduling changes might be considered for our school. And again, they'll be bringing that information back to the board on June 7th. The, so the visitations have occurred. The teams come back from the visitation, and they have a facilitated discussion by the middle school administrators. That information is being gathered and put together into a format to present to the board, and there'll be some findings and recommendations reported to the board on June 7th. So that is a work in progress. It is a priority of the district and the board. I will also note that in the budget process, budget just passed, there were recommendations in that budget that were supported by our board, and I appreciate that very much in terms of additional FTEs, teacher positions to move back to a full teaming model at the sixth grade level, and an additional assistant principal. Prior to that, two years ago, the board supported an additional social worker at the school. You supported additional staff for the alternative programs, and we appreciate that very, very much. So one of the priorities that we have set and we are measuring this initiative is to have a comprehensive middle school initiative to continue to support our students, our families, and our staff at Goth Middle School. The next area I'd like to highlight is in the document on page four, goal number 10. Goal number 10, we've talked a lot this year about making sure that we continue to work for all of our schools to be as inclusive as they can be, that we review our policies, our practices, and our school activities to make sure that students, families, staff, regardless of background or experience, feel welcome in our schools. As part of that, there have been a number of things that we have done this year. It is still a work in progress, and we recognize that there's more work that we need to do. We had some suggestions from a board member, Emily, who's not here tonight, to really take a closer look at some of our policy documents and our forms. We revised our athletic handbook to use language that was more inclusive of different kinds of family relationships that we serve in the district. Additionally, some of our pre-K and kindergarten registration forms were a little outdated in terms of the way that the information was being collected, and we made some updates to our pre-K and kindergarten registration forms. We do have translation services available within the district for any families who may need assistance in communicating with school staff. One of the things that we want to highlight is our Parentsware tool can now translate communications that come from the district in more than 100 different languages, and it's something that we have in place within the district. Our Committee for Global Education has been supporting initiatives in the area of diversity, equity, and inclusion. One thing that we thought we would do this year, which was very successful, is emphasize unity and community, be as inclusive a school district as we could. We sponsored a one district, one community, one book initiative program in which we asked everybody within the school community, students, faculty, staff, board members, community groups, community leaders, to read a book called Elephant in the Room. That book was a way to bring everybody together, not only to promote literacy, but also to emphasize that we are one district, we are one community, and we are inclusive of everyone. Additionally, that particular initiative was capstoned by a visit from the author, which was very well received, and we had our fourth graders and our fifth graders attend that author visit at Columbia High School, and we streamed it to every classroom in the district so everybody could participate. Also want to thank the Social Studies Department and Wendy Macaloney for sponsoring the fifth Multicultural and Tolerance Fair. There were some additional items that she coordinated to add to that, to tie that celebration to our elephant in the room, and she involved the elementary students in coloring a design that was based on the theme of the book. So we have a report later on the board agenda of the Committee on Global Education's work, which we'll save for later, but I just wanted to highlight the work that we're doing in the middle school and the work that we're doing to promote inclusiveness within our school district.
Thank you. Any questions, board members? That's the first one. Okay, who's next? Rissa, okay.
So I'd like to highlight board goal number 12. Explore initiatives to recruit, develop, promote, and support a diverse and inclusive talent pipeline of teachers, leaders, educators, and support staff. One of our objectives this year was to extend our recruitment efforts beyond the capital region while continuing to partner and strengthen our bonds with our regional institutions. We attended the Rochester area teacher recruitment event in March, and that event resulted in seeing about 100 candidates. These teaching candidates came from 14 Rochester area colleges and institutions, as well as the Buffalo area and central New York area. We also were able to meet those candidates in a group format and also conduct one-on-one interviews. We attended the Clarkson Mock Interview Day, which allows the Clarkson students who are completing their master's degrees in education in June 2023, an opportunity to get real-life experience and how to proceed with an interview and provide feedback with a variety of administrators across the capital region. And then we also attended the 2023 Education Expo Recruitment Event in April, which was hosted by St. Rose, and that event welcomed graduates and current students from all area colleges locally. We are seeing an increase in candidates across all levels, from our support staff to our teachers and also administrator positions. Most recently, we had two very well-qualified candidate pools for our Director of Business and Finance and our Director of PPS. And then most recently, for our teaching positions, we are back into three-digit numbers. We had 115 candidates apply for our elementary positions. Secondly, we, we wanted to make sure that we were developing and utilizing additional recruitment tools and resources to, again, support a diverse and inclusive talent pipeline and widening our application pools. Our non-instructional positions, we've decided to start posting on Indeed, as well as our district website and OLS. That has proven to be very effective. We're reaching a much larger applicant pool. We also now, in partnering with our CSCI, have a continuous recruitment posting for our school bus drivers, and we hold those interviews on a bi-weekly basis. And we are going to be, you know, through the approval of our budget, going to be migrating over to Schoolfront, which is an electronic platform that allows the Office of Human Resources to essentially go electronic, so all of our personnel files will eventually be web-based instead of paper-based. And it also has a module called Recruitfront, which would be an additional recruiting platform similar to OLS, which will allow for additional applicants to apply. And we have our demo tomorrow, so we're very excited for Recruitfront to begin.
Excellent. Any questions, board members? Good news.
Thank you, Mr. Bean.
Okay, thank you. I would like to highlight board goal number three, which starts on page two. That is to develop and implement facility improvements which provide future-driven teaching, learning, and extracurricular environments for students and educators. So I will address all three of the objectives under there. The first objective is to complete, which is completed, is to submit our building condition survey to SED. That survey, which is a summary of items that our architect puts together for us, addresses every, all the concerns or issues in all of our buildings and properties, that was submitted and certified to SED on March 1st. The next objective identifies priorities for future capital projects. So we use the building condition survey as our basis for starting to put the next capital project together. We are currently, we currently have bi-weekly meetings with our facilities director, as well as our construction managers, to go through the list of items that are on the building condition survey, which is quite extensive, and we, we are assigning a priority rating of one through three to those items. We involve the community and stakeholders. We have had a BRAC meeting, which is our Long Range Facilities Planning Committee meeting. We shared the report with them as well, and now that we're through the budget season, we plan to have another meeting set up with this committee where we will talk more about the priorities and the rating, and we will also invite our, our fiscal advisors to that meeting, and we can start to look at the scope of our next project. The last objective there is to explore innovative, flexible instructional spaces, and in order to do this as part of our next capital project, we have been meeting with different stakeholder groups, different departments and within the district. So we have met with the librarians, we've met with the music department, as well as the athletic coaches, amongst other groups, and we will continue to meet with them to solicit their input. The next goal I'd like to highlight is goal number nine, which begins on page three, with the objectives beginning on page four. The goal is to continue to evaluate and enhance district school safety policies and practices in all schools and at all school-sponsored events. So our first objective there is to implement the Stop It Anonymous reporting system. The anonymous reporting system is a system that went live on April 3rd to all students in grades five through 12. Behind the scenes, the system was set up so that we input administrator contract, contact information for all administrators, building administrators, as well as central office administrators, and all administrators needed to complete a training on this. We distributed age-appropriate posters to all of the buildings, and students were informed of the new platform at the end of March. The system can be accessed either on their phones or on their Chromebooks as an app. We find that the system is working. We've had incident reports in which we've been able to follow up with district administrators, as well as, in some cases, we've had law enforcement and our SROs involved, and that has turned out with positive outcomes and support for our students. The advocacy committee also met in February with some of our legislators at the Capitol. This group consisted of administrators, as well as community members and some of our students, which was very helpful, and we spoke about the need to develop ways and enhance our SRO program within the schools. Currently, we're finding that law enforcement has a limited pool of available officers, so we are looking for, we continue to look for additional resources in order to address safety within our schools. And then the next objective is to implement the Stop Arm Cameras. This is a program that, you know, we implemented with, in coordination with Quest R3 BOSI's with a company called Bus Patrol. So stop arm cameras have been installed on all of our buses. Right now, we have 102 buses in the district. There was a period of warning notices sent out to violators, and now the system is in full force, so tickets are being issued, and we are receiving monthly reports on citations that have been issued. We did receive a report in April, and I think you're going to talk a little bit more about that in our Health and Safety Committee review. Are there any questions on those? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So I'd like to first highlight board goal number four, which is to continue to implement curriculum and instructional practices to increase the percentage of students demonstrating both proficiency and mastery on all New York State Regents exams. And I wanted to highlight this because I know we've talked several times this year, and I know in the past about, you know, some of our elementary data with this, you know, new STAR assessment, but, you know, the, the high school really does a great job of looking at their student data as well. So the objective there is develop school-level goals and a plan for continuous improvement based on current data and trends. And like I said, the high school, Mr. Harkin and his, his administration team and the teachers really do a great job of, in the class, trying to meet the needs of all of our students, but then also providing opportunities for students outside of the classroom. You know, they have early intervention for struggling learners that start very early in the school year. Students are provided, you know, opportunities for multiple interventions, after-school support, homework center, the LRC, which is built right into some student schedules, individual tutoring, peer tutoring, many different opportunities for students who are having any difficulties. Also newly created is the ARC, which is the Athletic Resource Center, which is allows student athletes to receive support in courses they may be struggling in. Also, they're doing bi-weekly attendance committee meetings to monitor students' absences and tardies. And then also the Administrative Mentoring Program, which pairs students who have been suspended from school with a principle for weekly check-ins, you know, which allows them to, you know, check on a student academically and those social interactions as well. And again, they have a lot of data there in terms of, you know, student report cards, you know, the Regents exams results, and then Mr. Harkin and his team are always looking at, you know, students at the end of each quarter who may be struggling in, in courses. The second goal that I'd like to look at is goal number six, which is on the bottom of that page and also goes onto the top of page three. That was to develop and initiate a district-wide approach to social-emotional learning. So I'm really proud of, of the committee work for this goal. So the objective was to create a district social-emotional learning committee and set committee goals to support student social-emotional learning. And we, we started meeting with that committee rate in the beginning, actually the end of August was our first meeting before school even got started. And, you know, as a group, we came up with, you know, three goals that we wanted to focus on this year. The first one was developing and implementing a staff social-emotional learning needs assessment survey, which was done, completed, and the team was able to look at the results of that, which are going to help guide our professional development as we continue to move forward. Also, our second goal was to have SEL professional development focus areas. And then our third was to explore and possibly adopt a social-emotional learning curriculum. So had a lot of great discussions with the committee regarding that in terms of, you know, an actual social-emotional learning curriculum, K-12, or there's some different options that we're looking to, to do. So like you said, I, that committee has done a lot of great work, and then also we're creating a social-emotional learning guide that And then also we're creating a social-emotional learning guide that will support the work around SEL for the district. So I think, you know, a lot of things that we've learned from that is, there's a lot of great SEL work already going on within the district, but having a guide will really be able to make sure that that work is aligned to the New York State competency areas and the Castle competency areas to make sure that we're being targeted with our professional development and areas within each school.
So at this point, we'll take any questions that the board members may have or comments that the board members may have.
Questions or comments? Tremendous amount of work demonstrated here in the documents.
I wanted to ask about, I think it's, was it two, the middle school? I know we've been talking about doing teams, and is that in place for next year? Are we still exploring that?
Full teaming will be in place at the sixth grade level. And so at least in the core areas, English, Social Studies, Science, and Math, students will be assigned to the same group of four core area teachers. And those teachers will share those students in common. And hopefully next year, the following year, as we look at our budget, we may be able to move towards that in the seventh grade or the eighth grade. The benefits of the teaming, which we've talked about before, is the relationships among the kids are fostered more closely, the relationships between the staff and the kids are closer, they're able to do common learning themes, units of instruction, interdisciplinary type of work, common field trips, common social events. Just gives the kids and the staff a smaller feel, more connectedness within a large school of 970 or 980 students currently. So that teaming structure had to be modified several years ago when the state cut state aid to the district, staffing was reduced. We're slowly trying to bring it back, and we're starting with sixth grade this year. So yeah, we'll have it in place for sixth grade.
Will those sixth grade teachers that are on the team have some type of common planning time maybe, or like a check-in to discuss the students?
Yeah, I don't want to completely, yeah, I don't want to say that's a definite, but I know that that's the plan and they're working on.
That's when they work best, yeah.
Good question. Before we leave this topic and go to our next one, Peter, can throw your curveball. Can you go to the Board of Education website? I just want to show the community via the, if you go to the Board's website, and I just want to show the strategic vision graphic, as a reminder for people where this come from, so this very large document and all the work that goes into it is really the way we capture a lot of our information in terms of the scorecard. If you go down, Peter, to, nope, just scroll down to this page, you're good, no, you're good. This page, always to the bottom, you'll see the vision and then the graphic, there's a link to go on the graphic. Yep, there you go. So just showing the community that where this all comes from, and we talked about this earlier in last year, really. The primary objectives there, the future-driven education, wholehearted focus, the safe, inclusive, and diverse, and then within that circle, you see the school community, school community and pride. And then if you go down the next page, it starts getting to the goals for the year. And I think the progress you've made from taking this document, capturing it on the scorecard, which I'm sure is tons of work, so I appreciate that. And I think that part of it is, you know, finding a tool that will help you help the district. And then as you can see, the three primary areas, and continue to scroll down, it gets into the board goals and the objectives and where these come from. So just to kind of remind the community where this all came from and how important it is for us to really focus our objectives. This ties back to our finances, our budget, and all the work that we do as a school community. So just want to kind of show that. So thank you, Peter.
And I do think this year we made a conscious effort to try to reduce down the number of goals. You're starting to do so many that it was, so this is great because you can see huge amount of success. And these are the goals that are much more concentrated in.
Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Appreciate it. All right. Moving now to the next.
Yes, I'm going to turn the next presentation over to Mr. Stiles.
Sure. So we have a few members of our Columbia Guidance Department that are going to present on some of the academic opportunities that our students at Columbia have. And I believe this came from some questions from some of the board members just around, you know, what are some different things that, you know, our high school has to offer? So we have Ms. Malazo and Ms. Reynolds. I'm going to turn it over to them.
Welcome.
Thank you. Hi, this is Malazo, Allison Malazo. And this is Sophia Reynolds. So we're two of the five school counselors at the high school level here. So before presenting on all of the different academic opportunities that we have at the high school level, we figured we'd start with just like an overview of counseling and who we are. So guidance counselor, that term has evolved over the years to become school counselor to really more accurately reflect the current scope and role and duties that our job serves. So what duties are those? We really focus on three different domains. We have the academic domain, the college career readiness area, and then the social-emotional health. So we're getting things from three different areas that we're trying to, you know, support the students in. So for the sake of this presentation, we're going to focus on the academic part of it. So we figured we'd start with diploma types and exiting credentials. So when a student leaves Columbia, graduates from Columbia, there are different options they have. It's a diploma or an exiting credential. And many people are probably familiar with the Regents diploma and advanced Regents diploma, but there is an option for all students to get a local diploma. And to get a diploma, students have to earn a certain number of credits and take and earn certain scores on certain Regents exams that we'll talk a little bit about. So that's the diploma. But then there are also exiting credentials where students aren't necessarily meeting the scores on Regents exams. So that's the CDOS commencement credential, which basically shows that students are ready for entry-level positions and there are certain markers and documents that need to be earned from that. And then the skills and achievement commencement credential, which is for certain special education students who are instructed and assessed at an alternate assessment level.
So as Allison mentioned, most of us are familiar with the Regents and the advanced Regents diploma, and most of our kids graduate with either of these diplomas. The advanced Regents diploma is more rigorous in terms of courses that have to be taken and then, of course, exams that come at the end of those courses. So the major differences in summary would be for the advanced diploma, there's more years of foreign language, two more additional years of foreign language, and then additional, four additional Regents examinations that are required for the advanced diploma. And we still do have the option for kids who want to pursue the advanced diploma but don't want to take foreign language, we still do offer the five-credit sequence in business, art, tech, or music to substitute the language credit. But the majority of kids do take foreign language to get that advanced diploma.
And you'll, sorry, you'll see a commonality here is there are a lot of if, ands, and buts. So there's a typical progression for students. And I always say it's our job that if you don't make, you know, make one kind of benchmark, it's up to us to be like, okay, not a problem, let's look at these other paths. So it does get confusing. So we're just trying to give a real kind of general overview right now. So testing if, ands, or buts. So you, from the previous slide, you know, with the diplomas, students have to take an English or Social Studies, a Science, and a Math Regents exam, and then they have another pathway that they can choose from. Most students are graduating through the traditional or humanities pathway, which is with an additional Social Studies exam. So they'll take the global and then they'll take the US history. Most students are graduating with that, but there are other pathways for that advanced Regents diploma or local diploma. Another one is STEM, so earning the scores you need on an additional math or science exam. CTE, we have CTE pathways now that we'll talk about. State-approved pathways, both in our building but also through Questar, that students can graduate with. The CDOS commencement credential can also be used in a pathway. The Seal of Civic Readiness, which will be new next year, I believe. And then the state does have an arts and a language other than English pathway. We don't currently have those at the high school right now. Then there are also department-approved alternatives. So in my nine, 10 years just in the district, I've never had somebody graduate with a department-approved alternative. That would be like somebody scoring a three on an AP World History exam, and it takes the place of that history test Regents exam. Appeals. So the state has, a few years back, came out with an option for students to make appeals. So if they don't earn a 65 on a Regents exam but meet other criteria, they score between a 60 and a 64, they take the exam twice, and other things to show they've prepared for the second time they took the exam, we can appeal it and they can still graduate with a Regents diploma. If a student appeals two exams, they can graduate with a local diploma. So that's where that local diploma comes in. Then we have the COVID special appeal. So with COVID and gaps in learning, the state, right now through August, has, if a student scores between a 50 and a 64, there's an appeal process to have that count as a passing grade for the Regents exam. Then there are other options for students with IEPs. There's a low pass option where we're looking for like a 55 on Regents exams. Then the, they can, the next one, they can kind of compensate one low exam in a certain score with other exams at a 65. And then kind of the last one, the superintendent determination is something a parent can request if a student did not meet the low pass or the compensatory one either.
Allison, do you see a lot of the appeals?
Which appeals? COVID or regular appeals?
Either one.
COVID, yes.
COVID, yeah, I figured.
Yes, many, many. And the other appeal, the other appeals are kind of, I want to say negated right now because of the special appeals, but prior to that, we were seeing.
Will that go away?
Will what go?
Think it'll go away, the COVID special appeals?
At the end of August, right now, right now, it's only through the August Regents exams.
Thank you.
Is the state still kind of considering is Regents exams the way to go?
That's my understanding. We'll see. Honestly, the state changes graduation requirements and these things all the time, so it can be difficult to keep up with it, but, or keep up with where they're going.
They do have that Blue Ribbon Commission looking at graduation requirements, right?
Sorry, for the students with IEPs, so would that also include students who maybe have academic-based 504s or does it have to be an IEP?
It has to be an IEP, yep. Okay, so once a student actually, you know, they have a diploma, there are other seals and endorsements that can go on it. So starting from the local diploma, students who earn a local diploma could also get a CTE endorsement, they go through a CTE program, do certain things, and they could have that. Local diploma also has the option for the Seal of Civic Readiness, once we have that up and going. The Regents diploma has the option of all of that, of the local diploma, but then we have the Seal of Bilinguacy. That is something that started in January, right before COVID, and it was approved and we had something, so we're starting to get it back up and going at this point, and we do have a few students who are interested in that. And then honors. So honors is the average of the Regents exams needed for that diploma. It has to be equal to 90 or above without rounding. And then advanced Regents has all of those options, and then a mastery in math or mastery in science, which is an 85 or better on three of the exams in that area. And then for any of them, they can graduate with an advanced Regents diploma with mastery, honors, bilinguacy, CTE, civic readiness, and a CDOS commencement credential as well.
And I'm assuming people don't have to apply for that?
No, that is something that, yep, exactly, that we do at the end of the year. And these are all stickers that go on diplomas, and so it can be tricky to find space on the diploma for some of these students.
Allison, can I ask you a question? I don't need a specific answer to it, but with the number of Regents exams that some of the kids for example in the current class didn't have to take, is there still an honors option?
There is. There is. And I wish I could repeat to you, exactly, but yeah, they look at the final, final average in the course. If it's like, you know, if they have one or two or three, it depends. So yes, we're constantly referring to that.
We are. So Columbia High School has amazing, wonderful college opportunities. We have the Sienna Early Assurance Program where, with the Sienna School of Business, where as early as a high school sophomore, students can secure a C at Sienna and be able to earn a bachelor's and an MBA from Sienna in four years. We also have outlined in our Program of Studies 26 classes for college credit, and those are the schools that award the transcript and the credits. Hudson Valley has been holding college and the high school summer classes, and for the past two years, those have been free to Red Sler residents, and the kids have done a great job of taking advantage of those opportunities. Really, really wonderful.
Yeah, and there is a process if students want to apply for the college credit to be on their transcript, we do have a process for that. So the last two, these are things that happened again around COVID and have kind of just been there. So through Questar, there is an agreement with Excelsior College to get an associate's degree. To my knowledge, it is still there, but not a lot of districts are taking advantage of that. It would be similar, not similar, but Tech Valley does that. And then the Sage Education Agreement, that was another kind of agreement that started. We have not been able to offer the classes for it at this point, but that was another thing that was in the works.
Other academic opportunities, as Allison mentioned, the Seal of Civic Readiness is in progress, as is the Seal of Bilinguacy. Our business department offers three pathways. For each of these pathways, students have to take approximately six required courses. They have to complete a professional portfolio, they have to create a career plan with work-based learning hours, and each of these pathways ends in a technical assessment, which includes a written and performance examination. So we do have kids pursuing those where they, when they can fit all six required courses into their schedule over the four years at Columbia. We also have wonderful career and technical education as well as new visions options. The CTE programs are more your VOTAC trade programs. They are junior and senior year, they are two-year programs such as culinary, construction, cosmetology. The new visions programs are for our honors-level students, their senior year, one-year-long program. And the reason those are the kids that are earmarked and successful in those programs is because in addition to taking high school credits and high school courses, they're also taking college classes and getting grades on college transcripts. So those are some wonderful opportunities, again, that our district allows a number of students to take advantage of each year.
P-Tech, STEM High is something, I think we're, it's at the second year of it, where students from eighth grade going into ninth grade can apply for STEM High. And it's, they're earning college credits, it's work-based learning, and they get an early start on like innovative careers. So I don't want to say it's not the same as Tech Valley High, but it's a different approach to learning. So it's definitely not for everybody, which is why there is, you know, an application process for it for students.
Distance learning, we do have distance learning opportunities. Currently, we have three classes that are televised through a two-way monitor from another high school that our students can participate and take advantage of, such as nutrition and wellness is one of them. In any given year, those course offerings may change and may vary depending on which schools are offering which subjects, and we do a great job of getting that out to the public, to our students and our parents, to let them know every year what new programs we might be offering through distance learning.
And then Questar's Virtual Learning Academy, it's something that I think this, it's an alternative kind of program, and this year we're kind of, we've been using it as like in our back pocket for students in extenuating circumstances. So we do have a few students over there at this point.
Our alternate education programs hold a really special place in my heart. We have about 75 students that total that participate in all of our alt-ed programs. Jumpstart is a program that is for freshmen only. However, they're still followed by Allison even beyond their freshman year. The beauty of all of these alt-ed programs is that we're taking that bigger school The beauty of all of these alt-ed programs is that we're taking that bigger school and we're making it smaller and really focusing in on the socio-emotional needs and academic needs of the kids in that program that have been identified as our most at-risk kids of possibly not graduating high school. CAP, the Columbia's Alt Ed Program, that services kids grades nine through twelve. And Operation Graduation targets our most at-risk seniors. And gets them through really, really wonderful programs. For academic support, Mr. Styles, I think, had touched on some of, some of them already. The wonderful thing about our academic supports at Columbia is that the majority of them take place during the day. So kids are more likely to want to take advantage of them during the day because it can be a long day for kids who don't find school easy. So the ones that are after school are those like the peer-to-peer tutoring program that was created by Mrs. Farnin this year, where our National Honor Society students were paired with kids needing some extra help. Our Athletic Resource Center is also after school for the athletes who are there anyway, waiting to go to practice. And everything else is, is during the day, which is really, really wonderful. And we can schedule kids in for that extra assistance. The, um, the academic assistance period was built into the day and it's open to all students, so it's in every student's schedule. And that's the first twenty minutes of school, which is really helpful. And then it leads right into your first period class.
Okay, so there's a lot that kind of funnels down from us, whether it's, you know, the state and graduation requirement changes, COVID graduation impacts, district initiatives like programs like the Tech Valley, STEM High, or just from each different department, when they're adding pathways, the seals, or like, you know, when the state changes a Regents exam. While we're not directly involved, we have to know about it and be able to provide some guidance to students and parents when they have questions. So, you know, it's, we're doing that, we're doing the academic career, social, emotional. And then we have our own guidance curriculum that we push in to classes and, and work with students on. So, you know, it's been challenging to manage all of these moving parts at times, especially this year with, we don't have a department chair. But, you know, we look forward to the additional opportunities that, you know, come our way and students' ways as we, you know, navigate the, the new reality we have.
So I know it's, it's kind of a big area and it's probably you've seen shift in your careers, the academic support now shifting to a lot of the social and emotional health support. How's that been? Like, have you seen that really shift quite a bit in the last few years?
Yes.
And, and do you feel?
We are really blessed with not just the counseling, the five counselors, but the three social workers are top-notch and we all work together beautifully. So it's a lot of kind of triage. Like, there's usually more than one of us working with one particular student. If someone's not available, someone else takes over. But yes, hospitalizations, parents in crisis, kids in crisis, for sure.
And the professional development opportunities, are you getting the, the support you need to get professional development in those areas? That probably the programs have shifted over time, right? The, the.
They have.
School counselor, right? Programs versus maybe what?
Yeah, they definitely have. I mean, there are definitely more targeted opportunities for counselors and more in the world of, you know, social, emotional health. We had three, well, social workers and a couple counselors were at a conference today, like getting great information. So, and then they bring it back to the department.
And I think, I think the issues, the, the mental health issues haven't changed, they've just increased. So, so in that regard, you know, yes, we're learning to manage it, but it's, it's not new, it's just more intense.
But, you know, we, we do appreciate it because you guys sometimes are the first line that they're going to. You know, if they're not connecting with a teacher, then you're seeing a potential good grade or attendance, and so you're starting to get engaged then.
Yeah, and I.
Where you can have that relationship with that.
Yeah, and I will say, teachers have also been great. There are times where I, I mean, I don't look at every one of my students' attendance every day, but I'll get an email or call being like, hey, so-and-so's been out, did you? And I was like, oh my gosh, I, I had no idea, and I pick up the phone and I call home. So it's really about, you know, everybody working as a, as a team as best as we, we can.
I feel like a dinosaur a little bit. In a good way, in a good way. Because years ago, you know, we, we weren't, we weren't going to people's houses. And now we'll team up and hey, so-and-so's not coming in, let's, let's, who's coming with me to the house? Let's, let's go do a home visit, like. You change with the times, you evolve with the times. And we go in pairs, you know, because we want to be safe and consider liability and all that. But we are, we are definitely taking different steps to reach out. And parents appreciate, like, of course, parents are on board with us doing something like that and they're very appreciative. But such are the times that your counselor might show up at your door. Answer the door.
Excellent, thank you. Appreciate your time and putting the effort into this and showing the board the work that you do. Much appreciated, thank you. All right, before we get to regular business, any other things you want to say? We will revisit the minutes now that we have a quorum. We can do only the one date, so we'll have to move to May third. I noticed looking at the attendance for those meetings that we won't have a, Jen wasn't here for, I think it was the one, so you'd have to abstain. So we'll do April twenty-fifth. Any questions or comments or revisions to the minutes on April twenty-fifth? Seeing none, need a motion to approve. Michelle, need a second. Mark, those in favor? Approved. We will move the May third, two items of public hearing in the minutes to the June meeting, the next June meeting. Going back down to regular business. Item A, approval of programs for resident children with disabilities, questions or comments? Now, I only have a few of you here, so you gotta, you raised your hand a lot. Need a motion to approve that? Jennifer, second, Kathleen, all those in favor? What's that? We'll go back and forth. Okay, uh, district voting results. Quick comment, Mr. Simons, on the voting results and some trends and all?
Yes, I just want to. I want to congratulate the board on a successful budget vote. I want to congratulate Mr. Duno, Mr. Mann, Mr. Temple on their election to the board. I appreciate your service and your willingness to help us support quality education in East Greenbush. And I really appreciate the time that you all put in. The voting results were pretty comparable in terms of the overall budget passage was about eighty, between eighty-three and eighty-four percent. Historically, if you look at some of the data that Linda Traxton puts together, largest voter turnout we ever had was the year two thousand nineteen, twenty, when we had to do paper ballots. But the last few years, the voting turnout has been fairly low when compared to the number of registered voters. So we always say that we appreciate the support of the community for our budget, but we also would like to see people come out and vote. So turnout, hopefully we could try to improve turnout next year. The trend of the last three years has been, we have passed the budget by well more than a super majority in the eighty percent range. And again, that's a credit to the work that we do with our board, our administrators, all of our faculty and staff and our families to be as transparent as we can be about our budget, our budget process. So the data is available for anybody to look at on our website. We, we do a very good job of tracking longitudinal data. And if anybody ever has any questions about school elections, we're happy to answer those through Linda's office.
Great, excellent, thank you. And I want to thank the, those who volunteered their time for help with the election and the, the processes there. So we need a motion to accept those results. Jennifer, second. Michelle, all those in favor? Next item is the appointment of the Director of Business and Finance. Ms. Mulligan is here with her family. Welcome. Introduce them.
Yeah, I'd like to just talk a little bit about the process. We had a very, very, very strong candidate pool of interested candidates for Director of Business and Finance. And we're losing an exceptional one. Linda Wagner, who is retiring. We've had a very good financial operation under Linda's tutelage, and we appreciate it very much, Linda.
Thank you.
Well, you're not, you still have a couple more meetings yet to come. But the process was very competitive. The board is really prioritized over the years, having a very good fiscal operation, both in the short term and the long term. And I'm very, very pleased that Jennifer Mulligan, who is someone I have known professionally through her work with Questar, both sees rose to the top of the pack. I congratulate Jennifer and her daughter Sammy and her husband Anthony and the little one at home on your transition into East Greenbush. We'll help you in any way that you need to be successful and we'll work with your current employer, who's, we're part of them as well, to make this transition work as smoothly as possible. Congratulations to your family. We're really, really very excited for you to come on board July first, July third. We'll let you have that weekend off. But, and we will work with you through this transition to make you as successful as possible. And thank you for bringing your family tonight.
So with that, need a motion to approve? Mark, second. Michelle, all those in favor? Approved, welcome. Anything you'd like to say while you're here?
I just want to thank the board for the appointment. I have some very big shoots that I've been working on for a very long time. I'm really looking forward to joining the district in a whole new way. My children are in this district, so I have a really vested interest in doing the awesome financial operations in this district, and I can't wait to get started, so.
And I know I can speak for myself and Mike, kind of bittersweet. Sorry to see you go from Questar, because I'm on the board, Mike's first. But very happy that you're coming here to East Greenbush, where I'm on the board and Mike's on the board. We do welcome you.
All right, so you can stick around if you want, but you're welcome to. Get back to Matthew.
It's a school night.
Welcome. Next item is a resolution to approve discontinuance of employment of a bus driver. Need a motion to approve that? Kathleen, second, Jennifer, all those in favor? We have an MOA with the EGOTS A, known as AGOTS, I believe.
Wait, can we do the rest all together?
Do you want to do these by?
Do we need a motion to combine them?
I don't know if we can.
Yeah, there's no, no reason other than that the board wanted to have this. There's no legal reason why these can't be consolidated and moved to the consent agenda best.
The only thing I want to talk about is the board meeting. Okay, you're eating your fingernail. So just the board meeting schedule, just one quick comment, we want to change a date, I think it was. That was it, but other than that, if the board's okay, we can move those to consent, once we have that conversation quick.
So the middle school let us know today that typically they have their eighth grade elevation celebration really what is the last half day of school, because kids come for a half day and then they have the ceremony in the evening. And that happens to fall next year on June twenty-sixth, which is the same Wednesday that we scheduled the board meeting. So if the board was open to modifying this calendar tonight and have our meeting on Tuesday in June, it wouldn't conflict with the eighth grade elevation celebration.
So we'll make that change. Or Thursday.
Six twenty-five or six twenty-seven?
Yes.
See which day you choose, I know how to vote.
You don't have to worry about it.
Yeah, but doesn't matter to me.
Thursdays are not good for me.
Do Tuesday?
Tuesday, the twenty-fifth. All right, pencil it in. If we have to make any adjustments, sorry. If we have to make any revisions, we'll just talk about it. Okay, so we will then, with that change, we will do items, we did E, right?
No.
Did not. Items E through K by consent. Any questions or comments on those items? Seeing none, need a motion to approve those by consent. Michelle, need a second? Jennifer, sorry. All those in favor, approved. All right, we're moving on to committee reports. It says eight-thirty, but we are at eight-oh-seven, so thank you for doing that, board members. Marissa, you are first.
I just wanted to say a quick thank you to everyone who served on the Director of Business and Finance interview committees and also the Director of People Personnel Services Committee. I know those are long days, but your input and your ideas are much appreciated to the district.
Yes, John sat on the committee for PPS. He fully endorsed the selection and felt the process went very, very well. So thank you for that process. One done, anything?
Yes.
Okay.
We had a finance and audit committee meeting on Monday, May first. We had guests that included Alan Walther from the Bonadillo Group. And he just reviewed the engagement letter with us for the twenty-two, twenty-three audit. And we had auditors here today, starting with preliminary work, and, and they'll be here again tomorrow. And Michael Wolf, our internal auditor, also joined us to report on his risk assessment report, which he has completed the field work on. He'll be issuing the report shortly. He also has reviewed the education foundation records. He'll be processing that report. And then during July, he'll be conducting an audit of the extra classroom clubs. He likes to include the big events, including like the proms and trips. And he will also be auditing separation payments at that time as well. He has completed cash and payroll. And then Patty Tori Doe-Bush is our claims auditor. And she just reviewed for the committee the steps that she takes in reviewing our claims each week on behalf of the board. We also had a health insurance review committee meeting this past Monday. And we had, in addition to our committee members, which had representatives from each of our negotiating units and unions, we had guests from Amshur Associates, including Chris Knopf, Kim Lawyer, and Paul Van Schenk, who are our insurance agents, as well as representatives from Highmark, Kevin Coranto, and Amanda Emiot. The reason we had this in-person meeting is because we have been experiencing a lot of issues. Our employees who have, are experiencing a lot of issues transitioning from Blue Shield to Highmark. So I thought it was a good idea to actually bring the people in that can actually speak to these issues. We are dealing with them one-on-one on individual cases within the district. But Highmark, Amshur wanted us to know that they take these issues very seriously. They are our go-between, between the district and Highmark. So they are handling the individual concerns. Highmark indicated that, yes, they acknowledged bumps in the road in this transition, which have been more than we expected. But they are not only looking at the individual issues, but they're looking at the effect on the overall group. He indicated that at the same time, the providers were going through this education process as well. So we had a lot of issues with providers using the wrong billing codes, which were resulting in increased co-pays for our employees, as well as issues with the, the labs that we can go to regarding blood work. So they did talk about, as of five nineteen, they issued a new system. They have built a new system in which the employees will not be handling those issues anymore. A lot of the, a lot of the results were coming back to the employees to handle them, and I didn't think that was right. So they have built a new system. And right now, any issues that are reported, and we encourage all employees to report those issues to our health, our insurance technician or myself. But those issues are being resolved between Highmark and the provider. And they are also going back to January first of twenty-three to look at any of those issues that occurred as well. So they did indicate to us that, you know, they are working on wording to communicate to all of the members, as well as the retirees, that they are, they are recognizing the issues that have occurred and they promise better communication moving forward. So from this point on, we should expect to see better results. Yeah. And that's it for my remarks.
I know Highmark is with all the districts in the region when they purchased the, the Blue Plan. They've experienced a lot of coding issues, a lot of individual issues. So appreciate you take being proactive and holding your feet to the fire. The consortium as a whole with the RCG Trust, there's a lot of buying power in the region. And that's, we're talking hundreds of millions of dollars in business, so.
Right, and, and now that we're.
They need to get their know-what together, so.
Yeah, I'm glad there's a mediator now that the employees don't have to try to.
Yeah. Challenging enough to have medical issues and deal with bills.
Well, our employees aren't the medical people. So, so they should not have to be dealing with this.
Thank you for the, that approach.
Yes, we had a committee for curriculum study meeting on May third. So just a few highlights from that meeting. We will have, will be in August and September, our three program reviews that are going on this year, which are business, world language, and athletics. They'll be presenting to the board, like I said, in August and September. They'll be presenting to the board, like I said, in August and September. When those are, those will be complete by the end of this school year. Ms. Shepherdson discussed the, and it came up with our, our school counselors, our reapproval process for the business pathways. So every five years, you have to, you know, get those reapproved through the state. So they were just, they submitted on May 1st for reapproval for those, and we have been approved. So those are going to be able to continue the same, those same three pathways. We also had a presentation by a member of our reading department on something called Sunday System, which is a tier-three intervention program that we're really excited about. So we have a few teachers that are piloting that this year. And really, you know, I've really seen some great progress with students, and it, and it will be our first true tier-three intervention program that we have. So the CCS committee endorsed that. We have already started making purchases for that program for next year, and we actually have professional development for the staff members that are actually happening this June, so that everybody's kind of ready to go for September. So really excited about that. We had 23 summer curriculum writing proposals totaling $67,183. In the approval, we can approve up to $40,000 of that. So our subcommittee met and we approved those, and I will have that list to you for our next meeting. We'll be able to take a look at. For the upcoming 2324 school year, we actually have four program reviews. We have our AIS program, art program, math, and social studies. Additionally, I spoke a little bit to that group and kind of ran over our, the Board of Ed strategic vision and goals, and just talked about the importance that, you know, that our Board of Ed goals are supported through our, you know, our different programs and curriculum, and to make sure that we're keeping that in mind when we're doing our program reviews. And then in terms of professional development, we actually also are in the middle of having a great PD opportunity. Haggerty, which is a phonemic awareness program that we're going to be bringing in for kindergarten and first grade next year. We're adding that to our curriculum. And there's actually also a piece of Haggerty called Bridge the Gap, which is for second grade and above. Again, we are doing the professional development with those staff members this spring for that. And then we're actually officially adding that into our curriculum maps in kindergarten and first grade for next year. That is, that is all for me.
Any questions or comments?
So Roy, are we getting rid of something in the kindergarten, or is this an additional?
No, this is a need. Yep.
Do you have a schedule, Roy, of the program reviews, like, like the rotational schedule?
I do.
Is that something you can share with us?
I can, sure.
Like a five-year review, three-year?
It's, yes, it's a five-year cycle.
Can you share that? Thank you. Moving to Mr. Simon.
Yes, I want to report on two committees, our committee on global education and our health and safety committee. Our committee on global education had a meeting on May 9th at 3:15 via Google Meet. I thank the committee for its work, particularly this year on the One District, One Community, One Book Initiative. We established some draft goals for the committee to take a look at for next year, focusing more on some of the relational issues we're experiencing with student, student interactions at the middle school level. We are in the process of identifying some outside agencies and resources that can help us in the development of supportive programs for staff and for students. We happen to have the benefit of a local community member who works for the Center for School Safety, who's Tina Tierney, who is a parent of former students in our district and a town board member. She advises the State Education Department through her work and is affiliated with Measurement, Inc., which is a national organization that looks at studies, data, communication, and other supports that can be put in place for schools. So myself, Mr. Stiles, and Mr. McHugh are going to be meeting with Representatives of Measurement, Inc. within the next couple of weeks to talk about what type of student support programs they might have, particularly tailored to the middle school level. Some articles were sent to us responding to hate and violence in schools, speaking up at school, creating a safety net for students to be up standards in terms of some of the negative interactions, bullying that may be occurring among students. Additionally, we have our, one of our middle school teachers, Rachel Mathis, is serving as the district representative along with Helen Sciacchi, who's here on the Questar Three BOSI's DEI Task Force. Rachel was familiar with a program that her son participated in through another district in the Capital Region BOSI's called Elevating Student Voices. Terry Bordell is bringing that program to our region for next year and has announced that we're going to be putting something in place in our region. It's a program that trains facilitators to train students, to facilitate student-to-student conversations around school climate, issues of concern to the students, and empower students to be leaders. So that's something that we are going to try to bring to the district next year. That was mentioned in the scorecard as well. The program involves students meeting four times per year, broadens student relationships, deals with issues of bias and perceptions. So I'm really happy that Questar is going to bring it to our region next year. Mrs. Curtin had referred us to a connection in the community, the Turkish-American Community Center. We are going to try to schedule one of our meetings there next year to reach out, to find out about what they do. And we also are talking about issues around family and parental engagement. I purchased this book that I referred to at a meeting in response to John Dunn's question called Beyond the Big Sale. I'm giving one to every board member. I'll give one to you, Mr. Temple. And I'm having the committee and the principals take a look at this book. It has a chuck full of resources to engage families and to help you to really take a look at whether or not your school is being as engaging as it could be with families, particularly through a lens of diversity. So it's something that the state endorsed a few years ago for districts that were identified in need of working on family engagement. And so I've purchased a copy for everybody to take a look at. At the back of the book, there's lots of surveys and school climate surveys and tools and rubrics that can be used to evaluate your parental engagement or your family engagement. So, and the committee seemed to be excited about that. Health and safety met on May 15th via Zoom. There's lots of topics going on regarding health and safety. As some of our reviews that are occurring since we had the incident on March 30th, our nurses have met with transportation department employees and our SROs to talk about how we prioritize students that have concerning medical needs. They've made some categories of the most concerning medical conditions that some of our students may have. We're having conversations about how to provide some training for our bus drivers from our nurses on those medical conditions, as well as how to have some procedures in place to provide provisions for those students that may be necessary if they're in a contracted lockdown again. Additionally, we have talked about the staging locations have been evaluated by principals. Those are being determined. Those staging locations will not be identified, because if we have an emergency, we don't want that information to go out to someone who may try to cause harm. But we now will have staging locations in the event that we have a similar incident. We are in the process of getting a system in place for additional master keys. The lockbox, Mr. Vickel has ordered those, as well as additional keys, and principals will be identifying a location within the building, so those extra master keys will be available, which will expedite the release process from the lockdown. Very interesting, Mrs. Wagler mentioned the data that is coming to us through the Bus Patrol Company, the Stop Arm Camera Program. There were more than 200 incidents that occurred since the start of the program. The data is disaggregated in the sense of those, those that were referred for a citation, those that there wasn't sufficient information for law enforcement to really determine that this was a violation. The data is even available by the bus number and the streets where these instances occurred. And after looking at the data, it was suggested by the committee that this would be a great tool for law enforcement to have. So I provided the report to the East Greenbush Police Department, and they've agreed to disseminate this information to the other law enforcement agencies. But you can basically look at areas where we're having high incidence of people passing the school buses, and the police can look at that information and manage their patrols accordingly. So it's turned out to be a very good resource. I want to thank Mark again for his persistence in getting that program in East Greenbush, and we were the first to be approved. And it's, it seems to be a very, very needed program. But also, some of the data that we're getting from it is going to be really helpful to law enforcement and prevent, from a prevention standpoint.
It started in March, correct? Early March was when we finally got them all installed?
Yeah, in March, but there was a period, that grace period, that kind of went through the early part of April.
Right, but I'm saying that 200 number was.
Yeah.
Was for April. Was for one month.
Yes. There's a lot of instances of this.
Can we talk about that for a minute?
Sure.
So I know there's some, some follow-up with that contract that we signed with Bus Patrol. That I think that the county had some obligation to put up some signage. Or, or the town was supposed to put up, somebody was supposed to put up signage. And I remember that.
Like warning signs.
Warning signs coming into these jurisdictions. And I don't know if that has happened yet. Not that it is required by law to, to, to have those, but I know that that was something that, you know, we looked at, that was, you know, addressed in, in the contract. And have we determined, is it, is it the county sheriff that is overseeing the program?
Yes. It's the county, the county is, my understanding is the county is overseeing the program. They're receiving the videos and the data, and then they're reviewing them, and then they're interacting with other, the local jurisdictions. But as far as the signage is concerned, I'll have to follow up on that, because I don't believe that has happened.
Yeah.
I don't believe it's in place yet.
And, you know, when I looked at the data, I was like, you know, almost 200 incidents of cars passing school buses. And, and, I mean, wow. So hopefully this will, this will work on it. Maybe after we get, you know, a complete month, you know, that data is not, is not confidential data.
No.
That we could also share that on our website to show what this program is, is, is doing.
The data on the individual drivers is reported, but we don't, I don't share that. This data is not.
No, but the number of incidents, you know. And, you know, once law enforcement gets the, this data, they can determine where the problem areas are.
That's right.
And once, you know, the problem areas are determined, you know, then they can focus as well on that, those areas. But, you know, it'd be great to, to let, you know, our, our district know and we've implemented this program and now look at the results that it's, you know, producing.
Yep. That's good. Thank you. And hopefully it would go down.
Hopefully.
Thank you, Mark. We also talked a little bit in general, Mr. Stiles spoke about the fact that State Education Department is requiring, as part of our district safety plan, a remote learning plan be filed and available for the districts in New York State. So when the board approves our district safety plan, likely in the summer, there'll be a component of it, will be the remote learning plan, which is required. And Mr. Stiles, if you want to speak a little bit about it, just in general.
Sure, so we had a, had a committee together that looked at our remote learning plan. It was nice, because, I don't want to say nice, you know, remote learning is not nice, but it wasn't starting from scratch, you know, so remote learning did occur. So we went over what are the requirements that we have to have in there. Probably one change was you really had to make sure, it said that, you know, asynchronous instruction had to be a supplement to synchronous instruction. So we did have to make sure that, you know, how we were addressing that. So for example, you know, I'll pick on the high school. So, you know, you can't have a, a remote learning day and a teacher just post assignments to, to their Google Classroom and say, submit these, and that count as remote learning. So there has to be some level of synchronous instruction that, that occurs in every class. So we're able to address that. And the committee felt really, you know, felt really good about our plan, and, and we feel, knock on wood, that it never has to be used. But if it does have to be used, we're in a good place.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Stiles. We also had a report from our SROs last week. There was, it was May 19th, it was actually this week. We had a mock DWI demonstration at the high school. It was very well received by students, informative to students. And this is the time of year where we want to caution all of our students or our drivers to not use alcohol or drugs or anything that may impair them in driving their vehicles with all the number of events that are going on, the kids out there, we want them to be safe. We have talked about the Juul grant that we received. We are having conversations about the effectiveness of the vape detection systems. At the high school, I've asked Mr. Harkin to put together some data that is available to determine whether or not we want to expand that to the middle school or to other restrooms at the high school. There has been some fine tuning, as I understand it. Mr. Harkin, if you want to briefly speak about this, that they're working better now than they were when we first got them.
They are working better now. They're, they're not giving us false positives. Unfortunately, students have found ways around the vape system. They use their shirts, they blow into their shirts when they exhale, they use wet paper towels. And then they wash their paper towels, and we lost the whole north side of the building one day. The house was being docked up, so the climate was out. So Mr. Simon's asked me to look at it. I think our, you know, our education is our best prevention, and it's the business we're in. But these do definitely help, especially, it helps us track, even if it's the noise in there, we can get the hits on the noise, or we know there's a lot of kids in there, we'll send a monitor right up to check on it. So the, the noise part is the, and the picking up in terms of aggression helps us probably more than vaping, because they don't hide that. They'll say what they want, and there'll be a lot of them in there. They have figured out ways to beat the vape detector. And I know other schools are piloting other ideas, so I'm going to talk at my next school council.
There has been a problem with delivery times, back orders, supply chain issues around AED batteries and pads for the AEDs, which are required to be replaced on schedule. Happy to report that we did receive this year our order of new batteries and pads, and all of our AED machines have been updated. So that concern no longer exists. That was a statewide, national concern, and I thank our nurses for advocating for those, as well as Paul Vickel and his department, for getting all of those changed out. The Stop It program that Linda mentioned earlier is a grant, it's a free program that has an app available for kids and anyone in the community to report, someone who may be self-harming, considering self-harm, harming others, intimidating others, or bullying, or engaging in behavior that is dangerous and unhealthy. The program is working really well, so from a vantage point of receiving those incident reports, we are receiving them, we are acting on them after school hours. I receive those directly, and we've had a number of them whereby concerns have come forward and have been either referred to the high school administration, the middle school administration, or law enforcement. And the call center that staffs those reports has been very professional. We get a follow-up email. We've had incidents that range from just a student-to-student conversation occurring really late at night on a holiday week, and the student being concerned about the student and using that system to let us know. And we've been able to track that student down, including when they were visiting family outside of the region to make sure that they were safe. We've had incidents where bullying has been reported and investigated. It's turned out to be an issue where administrators could intervene and solve the issue. We've had, you know, great cooperation from law enforcement in terms of families that may be outside the area, contacting other law enforcement agencies, and getting in touch with, with families. So the sad part about it is, we do have a lot of issues where kids are experiencing some, you know, serious mental health and/or threatening situations. We, meaning all schools, not just East Greenbush. But we have a good system that's working, where we're able to get on these issues immediately. Our administration has been very responsive, our law enforcement has been very responsive. But we are getting the reports, and we're getting them quite consistently. So kids are using the tool. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Jeff.
Jeff, can I just ask? Jeff, can I just ask, with the increase in the potential overdoses from Renster County, we've seen notice of that and skin activity, what can we do as a, a school and a community to educate our students and their families on that? I, you know, I'm really worried, given the increases that happened just over the last weekend.
Well, we, we have programs that our schools implement. We have assemblies that are starting as young as the fifth grade level now to make kids aware of the dangers of, of drugs, alcohol, vaping. We have been talking with the county about expanding our opioid prevention program down to the elementary school level, because we may have a need for visitors to the school, who may need Narcan. So we've been having a conversation about possibly reviewing that policy, and we have it only in the middle school and the high school. I think our social workers, our counselors, our administrators, our teachers do a really good job of addressing these issues in terms of the information. We recently had a regional presentation, or this is coming up, I'm not sure, it was rescheduled, the tall cop presentation.
It's rescheduled.
Rescheduled. Was today? And we had people going to that. The tall cop program makes staff aware of how, what types of devices are being manufactured now for which these products are being masked, disguised. We do a lot of, a lot of awareness in the district. We have the Drug and Alcohol Prevention Specialists from Renster County that's employed within our district. We have the Satellite Mental Health Clinic. We've added social workers.
I just don't know if we need to do something on this particular incident, you know, with the increase over the weekend. Like, should we be saying, hey, guys, be aware, this has increased, and I want you to be, you know, I know we do an amazing job, I just worry now that this is so at home and close to us, because it was Renster County over the weekend, it was all over the websites. Should we be doing something right now that says, all right, everybody, I'm going to release a letter telling you this is happening, and please don't do this, and think about what you're going to do.
We can certainly send a letter home. I think we could tie it into, you know, the senior activities that are going on at the end of the year activities. I know Mr. Harkin does meet with students and talk about these issues.
Yeah, the contacts wise, I'll meet with the seniors before they go, but we do, we appreciate it every day. It's in our, all our health curriculums. A lot of times even our administration government, the district classes will shift to the current event. We discuss current events, social studies classes, so maybe in the middle of, we'll work through, but if there is, you know, two desks, we can discuss that in class. So our teachers try to be proactive. You know, the problem is just, I think, to the leading of parents who are educated.
I was going to say, it might be good to have a communication to the parents, too, because some people may not, I've seen it on Facebook, but otherwise I don't track it, you know, either. Are they aware it's coming out there so they can have conversations with their kids? Because I know some people were like, it's a vape. And I'm like, oh, that doesn't mean it's only safe, you know? So, things like that. I do agree. I think it could be a combination from both things.
We'll work on the communication with some of the parents. Thank you.
And I just had one question to go back to the global education. The, it's okay. The program that Rachel Mathis had recommended, would that be just for middle schoolers? Would that be for?
Middle school and high school.
And high school kids?
Seven through 12.
Okay. I think it sounds like a really great opportunity. I'd like to see our kids do that.
Is it, I don't know, not being a parent anymore with a child in the high school hall, we did do some parent forums in the past. Have we done anything like that? Should we do revise that, or revise it, re-bring it back and maybe do some around this topic again? It's been a while, right?
Post-college plans.
Okay. Yeah, maybe think about maybe for even.
It's a major topic that I hope awareness we can teach students.
Great, great.
The athletic part, we talk about it all the time. We've got the muscles we use and the stuff we make, so we get certain people to come and talk to us, you know, about it.
We also work with Nopiates.
Not Nopiates, right? The wrestlers you've made.
No, but I'm saying Nopiates, that organization, there's a couple. Right. And we have talked about.
Put some ideas together to tend, maybe, address the parent issue.
Yeah.
Great. Thanks, thanks for bringing that up, Michelle. All right, moving on the agenda, table motions, not this time, all business board members?
Actually, I have one thing before I head out. We had started a conversation well before COVID about a later start time for the high school, and COVID definitely sidetracked that. I don't know if that's something that wants to be revisited. I keep getting the emails back, you know, from when we signed up for those at one of the conferences, so I just don't know.
Oh, that does that, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so I just don't know if that's something that, at a later time, the district wants to go back and look at, because we did start that, and then it got dropped.
Yes.
So, sorry, Mr. Harkin, to throw something else on your plate.
The transportation department in general has some ideas that would reduce the number of routes, but would require pretty significant changes in the start time of all of our buildings. So it's, it's not, when you look at the high school with the three-tiered busing system that we have, if you change the high school, you wind up changing the middle school and the elementary school. And I haven't, I haven't really had an opportunity to really review all of their changes, and it's, it's an issue that you have to kind of roll out to all of the buildings, the employees, it impacts the employee workday contracts, it impacts a lot of different things, so. We may want to, we may want to look at it next year, study it, study it for a year for possible implementation in the fall of 2025.
Didn't we talk about impacting the game schedule, the sports schedules, maybe too, if we're not partnered with other?
Yes. It's, it's a complicated puzzle.
And then COVID happens.
So we, I mean, we'll have a conversation, you know, as the board develops its goals and plans, see if that's something that there's interest in revisiting, but thank you for that.
Like I said, it's just something that keeps popping up in my email every now and then.
Well, we'll be at school boards in Buffalo, whoever's going, and I'm sure that group will be there, and we'll see how things are going.
We thought that was complicated.
Yeah, right. They made that one look easy.
So move on to the consent agenda. I do want to add the addendum to that, so it's items in 12 through, A through H, and 13, the addendum, as well. Any questions or comments on the instructional or on the consent agenda items?
Yes. I just want to point out, we have a special appointment on the agenda for the instructional appointments, and it's Dr. Catherine Guthrie. She's been patiently waiting in the back. She hired. Catherine is coming to us from Shenandoah Central School District, where she is a grade nine through 12 Special Education Administrator. She has been a CSE Chair at Detroit City School District. She has been a State Education Department Regional Associate, and prior to that, she was a school psychologist. So she comes with a very extensive background, and again, in this case, with this position, it was a very competitive field of candidates, very well-qualified candidates, and I'm really glad that we're going to be able to hire Kat as our next Director of PPS to serve our district effective July 3rd, is that correct?
July 3rd.
So welcome to the district.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll make it official by voting on it, so I need a motion approved. Second, Michelle, those in favor, approve, congratulations, and everyone else, and also the lot of retirees on there, as always, this time of year, when we see a lot of our, our senior staff.
Do you have anything you wanted to say?
Change plans.
I just wanted to extend my gratitude to the community and the state on the bill.
Thanks. Looking forward to having you onboard. I'm sure Mr. Quail is also very anxious about it. He's like, oh, she came, great.
I don't think he quit, yeah. We'll check in with him tomorrow.
Yes. Thank you. All right, so we did that, the consent agenda items, including the addendum. New business board members, anything?
I just want to thank Roy for setting up the brief by our guidance counselors, and, you know, I know Sophia personally, because she was my son's guidance counselor, and she was phenomenal with him. I, I, I would like to continue on, and I'd like to see their, their college and career readiness portion of it, and how they're, you know, getting, getting, you know, are students ready to, to either, you know, go to college or, or whatever they choose after that career, military, whatever. And then, you know, hear what they have to say about the social and emotional health part of it, too. So it was great with the academic portion, but I'd really kind of like to hear their, their whole, you know.
The career section.
Yeah. So for, maybe some future board meetings.
Great.
So that was very good, and I really appreciate them coming.
Yeah. It really speaks to, to the amount of support they're providing with the social work team and the other folks, too, that help our students, so, yeah, it really has shifted.
We really can't downplay how significant that is.
Right. It's true.
Yeah, I agree. I think I had spoken to you, Roy, about initiating that, so it was great to see them and how many opportunities different students have. It's even just as a parent in the district, it's a bit overwhelming to try it, and it is like a jigsaw puzzle, so if they did come back and did a part B, just how do students access these? You know, there's so much to take in, so how are students made aware of those opportunities? They did a great job.
The only thing I want to mention is the parent square thing. Yes, the board members, one of the things I'll mention again, not a parent, so getting involved, I'd love to be part of that board parent square communication piece, so we can be part of it. There are a lot of information to share through there that, you know, we get at the same time as the community's getting, so we can do that.
I talked to Mark Adam, and we think the best way to do it is to just put all the board members on as employees, so you would get mostly everything. You might get the snow day text messages early in the morning, there's no way to really shut that off, but you wouldn't get, actually, I think there is now a way to shut that off. You would get, you would get the more level serious alerts, and you would get all of the communication that we normally send out.
District-wide, no.
District-wide, all the district-wide communication.
So I don't need Mr. Garbs and Mr. Harkin's little notes to the staff and.
General stuff we send out to parents and employees, you would get all of that, so you would, and what we're doing now is it's kind of hard to capture everything, and Mark will tell me, well, I sent this out, and then I sent it out to the board, and I may miss a few things, so, yeah. I think it's a good idea to have you on there.
I got the app ready. Sign me up.
All right. So we're going to go ahead and do that. We may need your, your cell phone numbers and your, we'll use your board emails, but we probably need your cell phone numbers. I believe we have, we have all of those. If we're missing anything, we'll, we'll contact you.
Excellent, thank you. And Jesse?
And Jesse will get you.
Month of July 1st, it's okay. All right.
I'm sorry, the only other thing I wanted to mention, too, is we, through the email, we got so many nice commendations about the eighth grade Washington trip, specifically how well Mike Newman did with organizing and orchestrating it, so it's just really great to see that that's back in place and that it was successful.
Thank you.
Yeah, I absolutely support that as a parent. Wonderful, wonderful experience, and we're so thrilled to have it back, and, and Mike and his staff, and everybody at golf, but those two especially, did phenomenal, phenomenal. They were just, you know, the top that we could do, and we should be, we should recognize that if we can, even as, as a board or something, because this was the first big one.
Yeah. My daughter, they didn't do it last year.
I might do it.
Yeah, so it's, I think, the first in three years, maybe.
Maybe a couple of kids.
Ted survived, yes. I did win.
Oh, good. So we'll have some middle schoolers apparently at the next meeting, and maybe we can.
Yeah, middle school's coming to present their, their visits that they've done, and so maybe we'll.
Tie in some DC stuff.
People spoke very highly of his organization.
I can also say, from, I've heard about the sixth grade trip to Boston, which was also very well-received, and they had a ball, also. I heard very good things about that also.
Thank you. The community was very generous in donations to cover the cost of students who couldn't afford the overall charges, but all the fees have gone up, as you know, and there's a, there's a pretty good balance that we'll have to talk about at some point, but they were really so generous that they covered it, and, and just looking at me, but.
Well, I know, I mean, again, we, we talked about this as part of this trip, revisiting, and what the, what the importance that is to this community and to this board, that this is sustained.
And the other, you know, I believe the eighth grade did a career jam, you know, that went so well.
Get some skin in the game.
All the students in eighth grade went to Santa College for their career jam. I happened to be at the middle school when they were coming off the buses, and they seemed to have a really good experience. That's a, like a career fair for middle school kids to get them interested in, potentially looking at various careers, and there's businesses and colleges and other organizations there, unions, and the trades, and they, they, Santa has hosted it the last couple of years, and it's been very, very, very well, and our entire eighth grade class has gone.
Nice.
It's very nice to see all the field trips back. Thank you for everybody. It makes a big difference to those kids.
All right. Public forum number two, anyone who did just the board this time? Word forum, we had a little comments there, anything else you want to add? Just open it up, since there's only five of us. Great, thank you. No executive session?
We have no executive session.
So with that, thank you, everyone. Need a motion to adjourn. Kathleen, Mark second, those in favor, approve, thanks, everyone, a great night.